We'll call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. If the councilors would kindly join me in a salute to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just note that this evening, the meeting is being aired live and recorded And if the members of the council would kindly join me in a moment of silence in commemoration of the recent passing of Mr. Angelo J. Venito. He passed on November 14th, 2022. Mr. Venito served in the United States Army with several combat engagements during the Korean War. Please join me in a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda this evening is approval of minutes, firstly, for the council meeting of October 11th. I know the councilors who were absent during that meeting, who should abstain from voting tonight. Our councilors, Colin Botes, Moore, Souza, and George. I believe we're still able to approve the minutes based on the attendance this evening. One, two, three, four. Do I count five?
Yep.
I believe I do. I would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. A voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. The meeting minutes of November 15th, 2022. I know the councilors, Colin Botes and Gallagher, were unavailable. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Thank you. And finally, the council meeting of November 22nd, 2022. Councilors Colin Botes, George, and Rushton should abstain. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Alright, motion to approve and second. Thank you. Any discussion? And seeing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. I thank you all. Announcements from the President. I have none this evening. There are no proclamations. And we can move directly to citizen open forum. I would welcome any citizens who care to address the council to kindly step forward, introduce yourself, and identify your street. And please, if you would, limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. Any member of the public? Thank you. I see Mrs. Hanson. Welcome.
Hi. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. Good evening. I just, I know the question is on the ballot, so, but I am going to be talking about that question, just to maybe just put in opinions or thoughts to people that are looking at it to vote. I'm definitely opposed to it. No question, you know, no secret there. But there's, besides the fact of the dangers of pot, I'm going to say pot because it's shorter than marijuana. Bridgewater doesn't need this type of business in town. I'd like to try to keep Bridgewater a family-oriented town. Adding this to our town is not going to help this town in any way. The tax dollars are the only argument to this. And I don't think that's good enough. The Bridgewater doesn't need this type of business in town. Non-medical marijuana is a drug that causes health concerns, impaired driving, and judgments. Calling it recreational is an unfortunate word because it seems like it, makes it seem like it's harmless. It's not harmless. We all know that of the dangers with pot, and we should know the dangers with pot. And the only argument, as I said, has been consistently presented for the approval of pot shops is the tax income it could potentially generate, which is supposed to go to schools and roads. How hypocritical is this? We teach our kids not to drink, don't take drugs, and it is a drug, don't smoke. But here we are, promoting the sale of this to get money to go to the schools that the kids are in. What does that teach our kids? You know, it's okay, don't use it, but it's okay to sell it so we can use it for this. I would like to see the financial reports of the towns that have been in business for a lo, have retail in their stores for a long ti, in the town, for a long time, and see what it was like before and after as far as their financial situation. You know, are their schools that much better off? Are their roads fixed? Do they have the gold-paved roads? Are they keeping their teachers? You know, all that. I would like to see how that is working out. Money's not everything. That being said, I feel that the ballot question is kind of deceiving and not totally understandable to many, not realizing what this actually means. It's supposed to be a change in the ordinance to allow medical marijuana places to convert to retail if they so choose. And we all know they so choose because they've been doing, wanting it since the day they opened. That being said, you know, it's limiting it to two facilities. Does that mean the town only allows two medical facilities in town to begin with? I haven't really been able to research if we're only limiting to two in the town. What happens if we get a third one? It still only limits to two retail shops if this should get approved. And how would that open up the door for other people to want to apply that's not a medical facility? Hey, you've got the retail here. Is this going to be written anywhere that we're only allowing two retail shops in the town of Bridgewater if, God forbid, this gets approved? But the thing is, is that even though the state allows medical to have, convert, we're a town that's banned, and I don't think they can convert if we're banning. And you would have to lift the ban in order for them to become retail. This is just being presented, I assume, to go into the ordinance so it's there in case we do lift the ban and now it's all set for them to go to retail. But it shouldn't matter. We're a banned town. They have to realize what this can mean, but I know my time is probably getting up there. But I urge Bridgewater residents to really do their research, really think about this, and stop having this as being the almighty daughter. There's no hardship for anybody to get this stuff. They can go in, as others have mentioned, into any other town, but it doesn't mean we have to jump off the cliff like everybody else. I just will end with, the Wellness Theory, or ACS, puts right in here to remind everybody, sorry, my iPad just, they have it on their site that they're locally owned and blah, blah, blah. But they consume a responsibility. They tell us, you know, that you, they remind us that there may be health risks associated with consumption of this product. This product has not been analyzed or approved by the Federal Drug Administration. There is limited information on the side effects of using this product, and there may be associated health risks. Marijuana used during pregnancy and breastfeeding may-
Mrs. Hanson, I, I'm sorry, I do need to ask you to-
Only two more seconds.
-conclude your remarks. Thank you.
It's against the law to drive or operate a machine, which we all know. But there may be health risks associated with consumption of this product. It can impair concentration, coordination, and judgment. This is not a piece of gum that everybody's eaten. This is, this is a dangerous situation, and I don't think Bridgewater needs it. People have to realize what this ballot question, I think this ballot question is not appropriate for people to be voting on at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Are there other members of the public who care to address the council?
Good evening, Councilman. Sandra Wright. Do I have to say my name and address? 150 E Street. Haven't been in here for a while. I just want to read this to you people that, and how I feel and what I want to express. There are some people in the town who say a no vote on October 1st will only deprive Bridgewater of tax revenue and will make no other differences. The problem with this statement is that experience and data from other communities across the nation tell us a different story. A story that says, in fact, there will be negative impact long-term, some of which could be life-changing for residents. Bridgewater has five towns that border it. Only two of those towns, Middleborough and Halifax, currently allow the sale of recreational marijuana. West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Rainham, and Bridgewater all still have bans in place. Studies consistently reveal that there were, that there is increased availability, there will be increased usage, especially with youth. In fact, the data shows that those communities that allow the sale of recreational marijuana will see approximately a 20% increase in usage across youths and adult age groups. The data also reveals that one out of six, which is 16%, teens will be at risk for addiction. Bridgewater-Rainham High School currently has 1,400 students. That means approximately 225 kids could become addicted. Is that really what Bridgewater wants for our town? I don't think so. The decision by our town council was made for one reason only: money. In the form, and potential tax revenue estimated to be approximately $500,000. Let us put it in a perspective. Given that Bridgewater has $70 million budget, $500,000 in potential revenue would be less than 1% of the town's budget. 7% of, would be exact, 7% to be exact. Hardly worth noting and jeopardizing the public health and safety of our residents. The fact is, we are already getting tax revenue from the state as part of the sales tax already implemented on marijuana sales. In addition, the passage of state referendum, question one, back in November, means we will also receive additional revenue that can be used for education, roads, bridges, and public transportation. What the town council has repeatedly ignored, however, are any health-related issues or associated costs that recreational marijuana will impose on Bridgewater. A detailed study conducted by the town of Haverhill estimated that three pot shops would cost their town approximately $157,000 in one-time cost and 1.3 million in annual cost, including additional police officers to cover the cannabis shops and increase improved driving due to marijuana use. Excuse me. Additional school personnel to address increased marijuana availability and use by schoolchildren and health departments and administration costs. From a public safety perspective, the data indicates that retail marijuana sales would also bring more drug-impaired drivers to our town, leading to more car accidents. A researcher at MIT analyzed fatal car crash data in every ZIP code where recreational pot shops were open. He found that recreational pot shops increased the rate of fatal car crashes by approximately 6% relative to ZIP codes without dispensaries. And to make things worse, marijuana combined with alcohol increases impaired up to eight times. I hope we can all agree that we do not want more fatal accidents in Bridgewater. Although it's true that there are already drugs in Bridgewater, allowing the sale within our town borders would only increase the amount of marijuana, leading to higher rates of addiction, suicide, drugging, driving, et cetera. Please join Bridgewater Kids in opposing the question by voting no on January 7th. Please, I beg you people to understand that this is not something we want to have our kids taking and doing. I know, being on the Suicide Coalition, I know my experience in the fire department, what these kids go through and what we're doing to them. We should not involve our kids in this, and they should be left alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Are there other citizens? Mr. Ivaldi?
Good evening. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. From the 1930s to the 1950s, believe it or not, doctors were the main figures on the pages of cigarette advertisements. Tobacco companies duped the public into thinking that smoking was okay by actually using doctors to reassure the public that cigarettes, cigars, and pipes were not harmful to you. It wasn't until the publication of the Certain General's Report in 1964 that the truth was finally exposed. As we all know now, smoking was determined to cause, to cause all kinds of health issues, including cancer. By then, it was too late, as millions of people around the world were addicted to tobacco and were suffering and dying from tobacco-related illnesses. Fast forward to today. The marijuana industry is spending millions of dollars to convince the public that marijuana is harmless or even good for you. The research is clear. Today's highly potent marijuana increases the risk of heart problems, is linked to cancer, including testicular cancer in men, doubles the odds of a miscarriage among women whose partners use at least once a week, increases the risk of psychosis at least five times among daily users, and significantly increases the risk of suicide. It's not rocket science. When you allow recreational marijuana to be sold to adults, use goes up, especially among young people. For example, rates of marijuana use disorder increase 25% among 12- to 17-year-olds in legal states versus non-legal states. But what about the argument that since alcohol and tobacco are legal, marijuana should be legal too? Well, that argument is flawed as well, in two ways. First of all, marijuana carries greater mental health risks than those drugs and is more detrimental to the heart and the brain. Number two, even if marijuana were no more harmful than alcohol and tobacco, why would we want to increase the availability and consumption of just another toxic and addictive substance? What about the argument that it's my body and I can do whatever I want with it? Marijuana smoke produces at least four times as much lung-damaging matter than tobacco smoke, meaning that secondhand smoke can actually be worse, and marijuana contains many of the same cancer-causing chemicals. Studies also reveal increased drug driving in legalized states, putting all citizens at greater danger while driving on the road. Since marijuana was legalized in Colorado, car crashes have skyrocketed over 150%, and they've doubled in Washington State. Crime goes up too. Rates of assault increased in Oregon and other states after legalization. So no, it's not an individual rights issue, it's a community health and safety issue. The bottom line is that legalization is all about creating a new addiction-for-profit industry, just like tobacco. Creating new users, lifelong customers, to line the pockets of the marijuana industry. For all these reasons, we should not expand the use of marijuana within Bridgewater by allowing the sale of recreational marijuana within its town borders. We should learn the lessons from the past with what happened with big tobacco and protect the health and safety of all of our citizens by voting no on question one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. Any further public comment from citizens? And seeing none, I think we can close that section and move on. Appointments. We do have one, a series of appointments this evening to consider for the newly-established Tree Committee. We have three appointees, and unless there's objection, I would ask that we consider these all in the context of a single vote. These individuals are Raymond Jamian. He is the Planning Board appointee to serve the term 2022 to 2023. Shirley Krasinski is the Bridgewater Improvement Association appointee to serve the term from 2022 to 2025. And Nicole Holmes is the Open Space Committee appointee to serve the term from 2022 to 2024. I would entertain a motion for approval of those appointments.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll just, I'll just make a motion that we, a second, that we approve them as the terms presented.
Alright, very good.
Each member has a different term.
That's correct. The terms are staggered indeed. That's correct. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And seeing none, if I could ask, please, for, please, for a vote in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. I thank you. We have no hearing scheduled for this evening, nor do we have licensed transactions before us, nor presentations. We can move directly to the Town Manager's Report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items on the agenda for my report. One is an update on our special election snow emergency procedures. I think Counselor George had asked about that, and thank you for asking about that because it spurred some research on our part. Obviously, anytime there's a storm, we will coordinate our plow drivers in such a way as to get the roads cleared as soon as possible. That gets increasingly difficult throughout the years as people are less inclined to plow either in the town trucks or in their own equipment. But regardless, depending on the, on the amount of a potential snowstorm, and that's essentially what we're talking about for July, sorry, January 7th, is a snowstorm. So if it's a small snowstorm, we'd make sure that we committed staff and resources to the actual middle school site. We'd probably station a piece of equipment there to clear snow throughout the day and shovel around the, around the polling place to make sure it's accessible. The real question is if it's a larger storm, that would trigger our emergency protocols and we would convene our emergency team and, as well as the town clerk and the town attorney, and determine what course of action we would take. Now, keep in mind, if the town clerk determines that a dangerous condition does exist and justifies postponing the election, we would do one of several things. We would either petition Superior Court for an emergency action, or we would ask the Secretary of State to petition the court on our behalf. So that's, that's largely a question of how the timing would work. Chances are that we would petition the court ourselves because unlike most spring elections, or for that matter, November national state elections, we're probably one of the few towns in the state that actually has an election, if not the only town, has an election on January 7th. So likely, we would, we would go to court ourselves on an emergency basis. So when you go to court, the judge will want to know things like, you know, what's, what's your plan? You know, when are you going to, when's the next date for the election? Give us that. So all of that would be built into an emergency order. I think through, you know, throughout a process, if we see snow on the horizon and it's building storm, communication is obviously the key. I talked to the town clerk today, and she's reached out to her colleagues in the state. And there are a few colleagues that have had emergency, emergencies that have forced a postponement of an election or a move of the election site from one location to another. And some of the items that, that of, you know, sometimes you just pick up really good, useful information that you haven't really thought of. And some of her colleagues recommended putting all of the election workers on, if you get their emails, or you get, better yet, you get their cell phones, put them all on a text messaging system, automated text messaging system, or a group text list so that you can keep them updated as to whether or not they have to show up for, for work at the polls or not. And if not, then when would they? So she is going to collect emails and cellphone numbers for all the election workers, also for all the candidates, because obviously candidates will want to know what the status of the election is as well. In terms of other communication, being able to communicate with residents about what, what is going to happen, we would use social media, which seems to be sort of the, unfortunately is probably the best way to put it, unfortunately is, is sort of the media of choice. Obviously, the newspaper, to the extent they can put something on websites, the town website, just plain old signposting throughout town. And then we would obviously use our electronic signs to post a postponement of notice of an election. So, and we would do that, obviously, with as much prior notice as possible, but is, as is the case with storms, anytime, sometimes you don't know until it's right upon you whether it's going to be a foot of snow or a couple of inches of snow. So, so obviously, we would be sensitive to that as well. So that's generally, oh, I did want to add, ultimately, the election procedures and processes are all dictated by the town clerk, so I don't have a whole lot of role to play there. Council doesn't have a whole lot of role to play, other than making sure that we've got a really good line of communication. Obviously, the emergency management team, council president, vice president, town attorney, the town clerk, me, we would, we would all be in pretty constant communication if we were to see that kind of, that kind of snow on the horizon or that kind of storm on the horizon. So the good news is that now that we've talked about it, it's not going to happen. But I'm happy to answer a question.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Dutton? Yes, Counselor Gallagher.
So let, thank you, Mr. President. So let me throw a little, you know, wrench into this. So in baseball, five innings is a complete game, right? So if we're six hours into the election and there's a foot of snow on the ground, is, can the polls be closed, I guess? And is it, is it an official election? Or does, once the decision is made to open, they stay open? I guess my question is, is, if it's predicted we're going to have a big storm that day, the decision can be made not to hold the election, even if a drop of snow never falls? Is that, I mean, I guess-
That's, that is possible. That is possible. But I think to answer your question about the, you know, getting beyond the fifth inning, that's, that's something that the court would decide.
Okay.
And Jason would probably go to court with a recommendation, which is usually what happens.
That should be a good experience.
Yeah.
In the middle of a snowstorm, if you don't mind, maybe not having the election at that point would be good.
Alright. Hope we don't get there, but yeah.
But that's, but that, I, I was going to preface what I said by just letting councilors know that, that there is no law on this.
Right.
And there's no direction, which is, is remarkable because we're in a state that is subject to frequent snowstorms and surprises. So you'd think that there'd be some more provision for emergencies than there really is, but, but that's what, that would be our plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Perry.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Andrew. What about early voting and absentee voting? Is that to be going on as planned? And is there any anticipated changes for that in regards to whether, if it's a few days of, of snow in that, in that matter?
I don't believe, and town clerk isn't here, but I don't believe we have early voting for municipal elections. I think that's only for state and federal elections.
Okay.
So, am I correct?
I think that's right. I don't want to misspeak. I think that's more appropriately addressed to the town clerk, but I haven't heard of any early voting.
Okay. Thank you.
But absentee ballots, still same thing. We, we would collect absentee ballots. In the event that we had to postpone an election because of inclement weather, absentee ballots are held and then counted when-
Once the election is-
-the election happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? And seeing none. Thank you very much. Mr. Dutton, I believe the fire station update is on your agenda?
It is, and just a little bit of an update this evening. We are looking, we met as a team this week, sort of the kickoff meeting for the, the official kickoff meeting for the design process. And we're looking at a design and bid, and bid process that will take us to September at the earliest, at the latest, November, and that's fine. We would like to get going, get bids back and accept a general contractor prior to really inclement weather, seems to be the theme of this meeting, in order to get foundations in the ground before, before deep freeze. We have commissioned the more detailed survey work, and that will begin immediately. And it is, I can tell you that it's likely that we'll be sending out two packages, one site, site work, a separate bid for the site work, and that will allow us to get going early and get the site prepared for an early foundation once the general contractor is selected. So you may see site work happen maybe six, eight months from now, and, or earlier, I should say earlier than that, but, but that is, that is why. Because we're trying to get the site as ready as possible for the general contractor to move, move in. And finally, the OPM and the architect contract extension should all be executed by the end of this week, and so that should be a done deal off of our plate by the end of this week. And that's about all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Are there questions for the town manager? I see none at the moment. I thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. No discussions are scheduled for this evening. Committee reports. Are there any committees that would care to report this evening? Seeing none. Legislation for action. First item before us is Order FY23-021, Town Council's Annual Etty Glance Calendar. I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Moore.
Sure. So a couple of things on this. One is, we did in committee change the name to the Strategic Planning Calendar. So- to the Strategic Planning Calendar. So I thought maybe what I could do before we vote is talk a little bit about the goals of the calendar, just as a reminder, and then help acclimate the council to sort of how it works and what's on it. So, reminder for the goals. So there are some meetings that are required by charter for the council to conduct, and I think as counselors sort of come on and off the council, sometimes those can get missed. So we wanted to make sure that we had an annual calendar where those key meetings that are required are on there, and we have the opportunity to talk about scheduling them. So that's one thing. The other thing is, you know, some of the really important meetings, things about the budget, some of the things like the Joint State of the Town Address require some planning. So with an annual calendar where we pick a date ahead of time, it gives us more time to just plan and coordinate those. So we wanted to make sure those are on a calendar. And then the last thing, and probably the most important, is throughout the year, there are a series of events that we use to sort of understand the goals and ultimately tie that to a budget request and tie that to a delivery plan for those things that we prioritize. And so with a strategic calendar, we can make sure that those activities are on the calendar and they're sequenced in a way where they can influence good strategic planning for the town. So that's the intention. The calendar itself is hard if you have it in black and white. It's really intended to be viewed in color. But I can just let you know a little bit about what's on it. Just for background, it has federal holidays, so we can make sure we're planning around holidays. It has the town council meetings, so we can coordinate things to align with a council meeting, or in the case where we need a separate meeting, avoid one. I've also added to this predictable dates for the town manager's status update. So as we're wondering, you know, sort of when those updates come out, it just gives us some regularity there. Election days are in there as well. And then the most important are the actual milestones themselves. And so I won't go through every milestone, but maybe just to give you a sense of the sequencing. The idea is that we get public input. We use those to influence the town council's goals. Those goals go into a strategic plan, which is essentially, you know, the town's way of executing against that. That influences the budget ask in the early part of the year. The approved budget sort of comes back in and influences an action plan, how much money did we get and what can we do with it? And then ultimately, the town manager's annual review is at the end of that, so we can get a sense of how that process worked and whether or not we've delivered against the things that we prioritized, funded, and voted on. So it's an at-a-glance calendar. It's intended to be managed by strategic planning and updated every year. Something new pops up, we can certainly change it mid-year. That's the idea.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll note that the Strategic Planning Committee on the 17th of November voted two to zero to recommend for passage. I would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion to approve the calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I just think this is going to be immensely helpful, especially if it can be published out on the webpage and people can see upcoming dates and things like that.
Thank you. I certainly agree. Yes, Counselor Perry?
Thank you. I'm the third member of that Strategic Planning Committee. I was unable to attend that meeting, but I was also in support of this calendar as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. No further discussion. I would entertain a, I would ask for a voice vote in favor of approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Further legislation for action tonight, Order FY23-031, Prior Fiscal Year Bill, and the Finance Committee voted five to nothing to recommend passage, and the Budget and Finance Committee voted two to zero to recommend.
Unlike a motion that we approve.
Thank you very much. You have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? And seeing none. If we could ask for a vote in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Order FY23-032, Veteran Tax Benefits. And I note that the Finance Committee had voted five to nothing in favor to recommend, and the Budget and Finance likewise voted two to zero to recommend approval. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
As a veteran, I believe I have to choose myself?
Oh, okay. That's fine. You may.
I'll just back up a little bit.
Thank you. All right. I appreciate that, Frank. Thank you.
Camera sight.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second as well?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any discussion? And seeing none. I would entertain a, I would ask for a voice vote in favor of approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Order FY23-033, Acceptance of Elderly Services Grant. And I note once again that the Finance Committee had voted five to nothing in favor of recommendation, and the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on December 6th, that's tonight, and Counselor, can you report?
Sure. The Budget and, who you want, me or?
You may.
Okay. I am the chairman. The Budget and Finance met prior to this meeting, and we voted three to zero to approve.
All right. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I would ask for, I would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Please vote, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have none. Thank you. Order FY23-034, Transfer Order, Employee Retro Longevity. And I note that Finance Committee had voted four to one to recommend approval at their meeting on November 30th. And Counselor, may I ask about the Budget and Finance Committee meeting tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. We met prior to tonight's meeting, and we voted three to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. And any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none. Thank you. Order FY23-035, Bridgewater Public Library Staff Association, Marketing Contract Ratification. And the Finance Committee had voted four to, four to zero to one to recommend at their November 30th meeting. And as for the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. President. We voted three to zero to recommend approval of this contract.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor, kindly vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Order FY23-036, Transfer Order, Contractual Settlement, the Bridgewater Public Library Staff Association. And this item had been voted, had been approved by the Finance Committee by a four to zero to one vote to recommend at their 11:30 meeting. And today, Counselor, how did the Budget and Finance Committee report?
The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to zero to approve this. This just pretty much funds what we approved in Order 35.
That's right. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. A motion for approval and a second. Thank you very much. Further discussion? I see none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none. Order FY23-037, Transfer Order, Water Enterprise Fund. The Finance Committee had voted five to nothing in favor at their November 30th meeting. And Counselor, for this particular legislation?
For this particular piece of legislation, to be consistent with the previous pieces of legislation, we voted three to zero to approve, to recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion.
Actually, Mr. President, if it's okay with you, I'd like to give the town manager a little bit of time to explain exactly what this feasibility study is about.
Thank you.
Thank you. This transfer funds a, what's, an engineering study that looks specifically at the ability of our water system to supply the customers that we have. And I think the council knows that something close to 100% of our town is hooked up to town water. I think last summer's drought really highlighted some potential failings in the system, or I should say, some potential weaknesses in the system. So this study looks at the ability, the storage capacity that we have, that we may, additional storage capacity that we may need, the distribution system, the size of pipe, water quality, and also looks at the possibility and feasibility of tying in the Vernon Street wells, which would offset, not offset, it would add to our capacity quite substantially. And so this study looks at the feasibility of all of that and the relative cost to do either piping from the Vernon Street wells to one of our treatment plants, or the feasibility of treating the water at the Vernon Street wells and then pumping it directly into the system. So it does quite a bit and gets us, excuse me, gets our water system updated into the 21st century and beyond, or at least it gives us recommendations on how to get updated for the 21st century and beyond.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, I note that the Finance Committee had voted five to nothing in favor at their November 30th meeting. Counselor, the Budget and Finance Committee?
We voted three to zero.
Three to zero in favor. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. And all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none. Thank you. Order FY23, I'm sorry, Ordnance, FY23-002, Zoning Ordnance, Amend Section 11 Definitions. I would ask if Counselor Moore has any comment?
Sure. So we spoke about this last time. Currently, there's a restriction on in-law apartments at 600 square feet. We've heard from residents who are trying to build in-law apartments that that's smaller, I think, than the desired living space. And so the request is to change this to 800 square feet in the definition. It allows more space, better living experience. It supports multiple people in the in-law apartment. I would ask for everyone's support in this.
Well, thank you, Counselor. At a joint public hearing held on November 2nd, Community, Economic and Development Committee voted two to nothing, and the planning board voted three to nothing to recommend. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town website. It may be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. And discussion?
I'll just add that during the hearing that we had with the joint hearing, several of the planning board members had done a lot of research on this, and they actually thought that this was still a conservative number. So anyone who thinks that adding 200 feet is a big deal, they were saying that in some communities, they allow up to like 1,000 feet. So we're still on a conservative side, and as Counselor Moore said, you know, this enlarges the living area to make it more comfortable when you have multiple people.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. If we could have a voice vote in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I see none. Thank you very much. Moving on to Petition, 2023-012, Special Town Election Warrant for the election on January 7th, 2023. This action had not been sent for discussion to any committee. It has been kept at the council level, and 14 days have elapsed, and we can finally consider it this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Have we signed this? Have we signed this yet? Is there a...
I think, I think we have signed the actual hard copy.
We have signed it? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll sign it tonight.
Oh, okay. We didn't...
It has not been signed yet.
And we will sign it tonight.
Okay.
No one leave until we sign.
There you go. That's my point.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Resolution FY23-002, Naming of the Old Scotland Links Golf Course Clubhouse. This was brought forward by Counselors Rushton and Moore. Counselor Moore, if you have any comment, we'd be happy to hear.
Yeah, again, this is to commemorate Charlie by renaming the clubhouse at Old Scotland Links in his honor. We read the entire thing into the record last time. If you haven't heard it in its entirety, I encourage everybody to read it. I think he had quite an impact on the town. I would ask for everybody's support in this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor. The order was not referred to any committee, and 14 days having elapsed, it can be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion, thank you, and a second. Thank you. Any discussion at all? For my part, I would just add that I feel it's absolutely appropriate, and I certainly feel that Charlie's many friends and family in the town see this as an appropriate method for us to pay tribute to his many contributions, and I heartily support it. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Old business, we have none scheduled this evening. New business. Order FY23-038, which I cannot find. Why is that? The Appropriation for Eminent Domain Order Taking for the Summer Street property. That is the mobile, thank you very much, Counselor, the mobile station property. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriation. Maybe some explanation also from the town manager.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And discussion? Do you have some comment on the matter, Mr. Dutton?
Absolutely, Mr. President. This is an appropriation. It appropriates from community preservation funds, which were recommended last week by the Community Preservation Committee. This funds $313,900 from community preservation funds, the Open Space Reserve account, to go towards the eminent domain taking of, I believe it's 46 Summer Street, commonly referred to as the old mobile station, for, namely, to create parkland and open space for the benefit of all Bridgewater residents. The actual order of taking was referred some time ago to the, I believe it was Community and Economic Development. And my hope is that the appropriation and the order of taking come back together at either your next meeting or the meeting after, obviously depending upon committee quarums and so forth. But my hope is that they can come back together. So we could not vote the order of taking without having the appropriation. We would have the appropriation with this, with this piece of legislation voted in the affirmative, and with this appropriation, we could then move forward and vote the actual order of taking.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Yes, Counselor Wood?
A couple of questions. I think this is Mark's first reading, so we can't vote on it tonight anyway, right?
Correct.
And it's a financial matter, so as the first item, then come back to me. I'll make a motion and move it to Budget, Finance, and Finance Committee.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Counselor Perry?
Yes, I just, I wanted to make it clear too, I don't know if we wanted to keep it at the council level or go to Budget and Finance, but I see that would be appropriate.
I think the Counselor makes a good point, but thank you. So we have a motion and a second for the Finance and Budget and Finance Committees.
President, I do have a question, either to Mr. Dutton or Mr. Rollins. So this gets referred down to Budget, Finance, and Finance Committee. In the committees, can they change the funding source? Not the amount, but the funding source. So if we were inclined to take it from our reserves rather than CPC, could it come back to the council as the funding source for the taking? And the reason for my question is I still have a fundamental issue with using CPC money to acquire the property that we gave, we gave direction that the town would acquire. I would rather use the CPC money for the cleaning, for the development, things of that nature. So my question is, could we come back with a different funding source?
Well, I think it would be up to you to deny or vote down the current appropriation and do a vote of the full appropriation. and do a vote of the full appropriation necessary for the taking. Do you see what I mean? Because right now, you have an appropriation that's conditioned upon the CPC funding, right? Drawing off of that. So if you're not drawing off of the CPC funding, I think you would have to come back with a new order that shows the full appropriation, none of which coming from CPC funding.
Okay. I don't want to hold up the taking, but what you're saying is, this goes down to committee, you can't.
Not at committee level. I think you all could do.
Have to do it here?
Yeah. I think you all could do it. I don't think at committee level, they can do it. So the Finance Committee could vote to not recommend it under the financial terms, right?
Right.
And then it comes back to you all, and then you can make a motion to maybe amend it or otherwise, right? If you don't like the funding source or how that's working.
I'm not thrilled with it, but I'll still support it going to committee.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Perry?
Yes, just a question through you, as a president of the town manager. So did you state that the actual eminent domain order is still in committee with the CEDC? And is that in something that's joint with the Planning Board or CEDC only?
Nope. That was, I believe, referred only to CED, and that's the only place it really needs to go from a legal perspective. But yeah, it was there, and I think at the time, I asked that it remain there until the appropriation, because it can't really, there's no point in having it come back to the council without the appropriation.
So I just hope to have the CDC give their determination on that for our next meeting as well.
Mr., you literally can't vote the taking until you voted the appropriation. So even when we get both to the council level, you have to vote the appropriation first before you vote the taking. So even in the way of the order which you guys schedule your votes, we have to do it in that manner.
Sure.
Because you can't obviously take a property that you don't have the funds to do.
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you then. On the motion for referral to the Budget, Finance, and Finance Committees, I'm sorry, Counselors?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one more question, and I'll ask this in committee too. The 500, there'll be a total of $558,000 that have been appropriated for the taking now. Is that just for the taking, or does that include development?
No.
That's just for the cost of taking the building?
So I'm projecting that the cost of the actual taking will be about $500,000. And I say that, and I say about, because there are closing costs that will have variables and so forth. We've also built in, out of that total appropriation, the council made an appropriation, I believe it was $245,000 some time ago. From that appropriation, we've allocated money for the design, the cleanup, the environmental 21E review, and those types of expenses. So those have been covered. The future improvements have not been budgeted yet, but the CPC knows that once the taking happens and we come back with a plan, that there'll be additional funding to do the actual open space development piece of it.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. We could have a vote to approve the referral to committees. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you.
Mr. President, just for informational purposes, my question was Counselor Perry's question, which was, I didn't know there was still an item in CEDC that needed to have action taken on this.
I think it's been some time since we've considered that action, so I think it's kind of slipped off our immediate focus, but it is there. Thank you. Town council meeting dates, our final consideration this evening, this is Resolution FY23-004, town council meeting dates for 2023. My suggestion is that we keep this matter at the council level without referral, and we can consider it again at an upcoming meeting. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Just a motion to keep it at a council level.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion further? I see none. And since we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I see none. Thank you very much. Citizen comments, I would ask that any interested citizens who care to address the council once again, please feel free to step forward.
Good evening again at Ivaldi Boxwood Lane. Consistent with what I've done in the past in providing you with information, I'd like to highlight several new studies, as well for the public tonight, that have recently revealed some more troubling information on the state of marijuana. An article published back in September in Psychology Today by a prominent psychologist revealed that there's a huge gap between the perceived hazards of marijuana use and its actual dangerousness. In fact, the author states that marijuana use is now a major driver of mental health problems in our nation, especially among the young. And he says that there's a mental health crisis going on right now in our nation. Another study conducted in October at Ottawa General Hospital determined that marijuana smokers could be at more risk for emphysema than cigarette smokers. Researchers compared approximately 150 lung scans for marijuana smokers, tobacco-only smokers, and non-smokers. The study found that rates of emphysema, airway inflammation, and enlarged breast tissue were higher in marijuana than in tobacco smokers. The scans also showed that 75% of the marijuana smokers actually had emphysema. Earlier this month, another comprehensive study, based on two national large data sets by Temple University researchers, showed that youth marijuana use increases after recreational legalization. The study found that after legalization, adolescent and young adult cannabis use increased. This confirms what many other studies have already shown. So another study after another study after another study that still shows that the more you have recreational marijuana in your area, youth will use it more. We're now beginning to see new studies being released almost monthly that tell us that we need to wake up and pay attention. We just can't look the other way and say this doesn't apply to Bridgewater. The bottom line is this, although question one claims to be about potential revenue, this is really a community health and safety issue that does not align with our town's values of caring for people. The addiction-for-profit industry does not care about people's lives, but only withlining their pockets. Every citizen and family in Bridgewater deserves the right to live in a drug-free environment. Instead of simply giving in to what everyone else seems to be doing around us, why don't we take a stand and do the following? Acknowledge what other more experienced states like Colorado, California, Oregon are finding. Accept the studies that are being published and use it to manage the future risks of our town. In other words, be thankful that others are learning the hard lessons that we don't have to learn. Let's learn from them. Consider doing what is best for our community and not the marijuana industry. And three, set an example for our children. Our kids are smart, and they have access to the same studies and reports that we get on the internet. So if question one gets approved, despite all the health and public safety warnings, how does this reflect on us as adults and parents if our kids see the same stuff we're seeing, but we make a decision that's bad for them? The future health and safety of our town and its residents is on the line with question one, and I ask all citizens, and you as well, to join Bridgewater Cares in opposing this question by voting no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ivaldi. Mrs. Hanson?
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I support everything that's been said by the other people. I just would like, hopefully, the town council can answer this question for me. On this vote, question, if this was to get approved, does that mean the medical facilities can convert immediately, well, with approval, to retail despite having a ban in Bridgewater? Or does it just have it on the books so that if we then have a vote to reverse the ban, which has been in place since 2016 or 17, then it wouldn't be in effect until we no longer have a ban? That's the question I want answered, or is this, because this definitely, if it's allowed despite the fact that we have a ban, then therefore we no longer have a ban. It does, one versus 100, it's still going to be no ban. So I just would like clarification of that, because this is a change to an ordinance, so it's on the book just in case. So I want to know, you know, how that works. And also to remind you, you know, I know they don't sell to anybody under 21. No one's saying that they are. But a 21-year-old knows an 18-year-old, who knows a 16-year-old? That's how it trickles down. And people that never thought of using this are now using it because it's now legal, so let me try it and see what it's like. They would never have used it if it wasn't legal. But in college, kids are 18 to 22 on average. So you're going to have a 21-year-old that can drink and smoke pot and do stuff, and then you're going to have a dorm mate down the road, even though they're not supposed to use it. Okay, not supposed to. They have easier access to it. When it becomes legal, they have easier access because they know somebody who's 21, 18, 16, it goes down the road. So as many have said, it does increase the use despite the fact that it's only 21-year-olds that can buy it. It does increase the access to youth. So that's what I'm going to say on that. But I also want to just comment how great the Christmas on the Common was this weekend, Sunday. I enjoyed it. I miss having my little boy, who's now 26 and married, and I saw the kids on the train, and it brings back really good memories, and I enjoyed having that train. And so it was really, it was very crowded and very well. And I hope it remains a non-political thing, you know, not to have anybody putting political stuff. It should be just business and family-oriented, promoting somebody's business, but not political, not, you know, signing petitions and stuff. I would like to keep it that way, more enjoyable, fun time, put the worries behind us. And the parade, short as it is, some people will say, well, it's not really a parade, it's for Santa Claus coming. But I enjoyed it, and the band was great. So I want to compliment the band, I want to compliment everybody that was involved, and I really enjoyed it, and I was by myself. So thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Further public comment? And yes, please, Mrs. Wright.
I'll just say one last thing. I remember many, many years ago, we were very concerned at one point where a liquor store was going to go in the other side of town up on 104, and it all came down to safety. And I think we fought hard for that, and we didn't want it. Also, there was the smoking ban, you know, town-free, you know, of smoke. And what it all came down to, again, is safety. So where do we draw the line? You know, this is all about safety, and I think we should keep everybody safe. We know what the addictions, we know what the drugs do, and when people get behind the wheel, and especially if they've also had alcohol, it's up to us, it's up to you to keep our kids, our families, safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Seeing no further public comment, I would ask for a comment from the council members. And if I could please, this evening, begin with Counselor Perry.
I had a feeling you were coming this way.
Bad seats.
It's all or nothing.
Be paid already then.
No, I would just, you know, to echo what Mrs. Hanson was saying, I want to congratulate the BBA for hosting a wonderful Christmas on the Common. All the events were spectacular this year. The weather was also cooperative, considering that the day before was quite messy, windy, and rainy, so we definitely had it on the right day. But I had a chance to get down there and see, it was jam-packed full of people, and, you know, wonderful events. We even had some axe-throwing this year, so I think it was a very well-received, very well-attended event, lots of food vendors, lots of individual business owners displaying their goods. So it was a wonderful, wonderful event. I also want to just comment on the fact that, yes, between the Bridgewater Lions Club putting up their decorations and the winter wonderful light display, I think the Common hasn't looked better. I think it's a wonderful collaboration of people coming together, getting that the Common to look the way it is. Actually, we're still putting up a couple of newly refreshed decorations coming on up. You will see the menorah's just been put up, as well as the manger scene will be putting up shortly. So I want to thank all the volunteers that came out to help the Lions Club in rehabbing the decorations. We have a number of people from BBA, from the Bridgewater Fourth of July Committee, and just individual citizens come and volunteer their services. I've actually had a woman who's an artist help to repaint the menorah and the manger scene, who's got some artistic skills, so very much appreciated there. And I just want to thank the citizens that came out to speak tonight, that all your comments were well-received and heard by myself. So thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Susan?
Let me see. Most of what he said I agree with, so I'm not going to repeat all of it. But I was at the Christmas on the Common. It was a really super thing, and it was one of the biggest turnouts that I've seen in quite a while. And that, in my mind, just shows that either people are tired of being locked up in their houses and they're finally getting out, or the community is starting to come together more. They're doing things together instead of, like Dr. Perry said, this group, and this group, and this group, and this group, all pitched in to do what one group used to do. Okay? So those are the kind of things that we really like to see in town, and we'd like to see those things continue in town. And I think that's what's going to build this town up, make it, you know, the community that I would like to see, and I'm sure most of you would like to see. Okay? That's it for today.
Thank you, Counselor.
One more.
Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate real quick, I'd like to thank the BBA, the BIA, Bridgewater Lions, anyone else that was involved in Christmas on the Common Sunday, it was fantastic. Hopefully, you know, this spurs something, we've always talked about either the spring or the summer, maybe doing something similar, a vendor fair, things of that nature. It was really nice to walk in the Common and not worried about getting blindsided by a car. So hopefully, we can maybe spur some people to look into that for the spring or the summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore?
Similar comments. I also really enjoyed Christmas on the Common and the parade there. Probably the shortest parade we walk in, but it was a really good time, so appreciate everyone who attended. I also wanted to thank some of the new restaurants in town. So I've had a chance, opportunity to visit the New Mexican Restaurants. It's great to see some new businesses coming in and investing in the community. So really excited about that. I encourage others to kind of wander around the downtown and see what's there now, some neat stuff. And then also appreciate the comments and coming in and speaking to us. And then the last thing, I'm excited to see all of the holiday lights pop up around town. If you have a chance, go by Ogless Way, it's over in my district, near me. They are also accepting donations for a local food pantry. So if you appreciate the lights that they're doing, there's a little thing you can kind of go online and donate to help others during the holiday season. So it's also an amazing display, and definitely worth the drive over. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate, I think the Christmas parade was very well-attended, and I was happy to march in it. Between my seven years as selectman and now eight years as councilman, that was my, and I'm keeping count, 48th parade that I've marched in in this town. Never missed one. So between Memorial Day, July 4th, Veterans Day, and the new one, that's the Christmas parade, that was 48th. So, and the Christmas on the Common was really nice, beautiful afternoon for it. They had great vendors, great crowd, great to see all the kids playing and all the great festive activities going on. And at night, the Common really looks nice. It's great to see the lights and the decorations, and the Facebook chatter has come down a little bit. It's still there, but it's come down quite a bit. And I also want to thank the three speakers that spoke tonight about the question on the ballot on January 7th. And it's been a very hot topic in this community since 2016, when it failed at the November 2016 presidential election. Since then, we have had numerous discussions at the council level about whether to make it retail or not. And on January 7th, there's a question on the ballot that everybody's aware about, and whether it does still hold a moratorium or a ban in the town, I'm not really sure. But my position as a councilman, since this issue has come up six years ago, seven years ago, has been very consistent. And I've always said, I do not think this is a good thing for the community, it's not a good thing for the town. Even though my colleagues on the council Even though my colleagues on the council, majority of them, have supported this through a vote to bring it to the ballot, it was not unanimous, but I respect their opinions, and I'm sure they respect mine. But it was not a unanimous vote, although in a democracy, majority rules. So I appreciate the speakers tonight, and, you know, I hope that people make an educated decision on January 7th, whether it's no's or not, and come out to vote and voice their concern. But you, the speakers were absolutely on target tonight. The recent studies that have been coming out, that the effect that it's having on the youth should be alarming to everybody. We have heard speakers that have come to this council talk about the increase in their counseling centers on the hazards and effects of the usage of recreational marijuana. So we should be alarmed as a community and make an educated decision whether this is really right for our town. And as we had a very festive weekend on the Common, that's what I want to see every weekend in this town. I don't want to see or hear of accidents, vehicle accidents, or young people having to be gone to rehabilitation because this leads to something else. We have choices, and my choice has always been, I don't think it's good for this community. And I do think that even if this does pass, this could, I think it could, could open us up to a different series of lawsuits, simply because we are targeting two, potentially two businesses specifically, to allow them to do it, and not opening it up. So I think it could create even more issues for this council down the road. So my position's always been no, and that's how I will vote on January 7th. And I think people need to make an educated decision whether they think this is a good thing for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Conal Botes?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Christmas on the Common was awesome. Parade was great. The weather couldn't have been better, you know? So huge turnout, a lot of different vendors there, including Black Hat, which sells beer. Sold beer on the Common, I think that may have been one of the first. ACS was there to talk about medical marijuana, and Bob's Wine was there also, I think, selling some wines. Interesting collection of vendors there. I'm going to call out Counselor Perry as Lion Perry. It was his effort to cheer the effort to recondition the items that went on the Common, and without that effort and the effort of many, many, many other hands, it wouldn't have happened, so, thank you. So the question on January 7th, it's interesting because when we talk about research and all these reports, most people don't know that research within the United States is highly constrained for marijuana in general because there's a, it's still on the substance list as Schedule I. So researchers who want to do research in the United States, and that's why one of the speakers talked about, you know, research of Ottawa, because researchers in the United States can't do quality research on marijuana because of where it sits on the schedule. The other thing is that, you know, that often gets brought up, and, you know, the citizens and counselors have brought up, are risk factors. Yep, there's risk factors. When we hear about treatment centers in Bridgewater treating teens, we know that there is risk already in Bridgewater. And when we look at the Twitter feed for Bridgewater Police, we see that there's a lot of OUIs in Bridgewater already. No one can tell exactly what the OUI was. When I first met Counselor Rushton, it was when he was a young police officer over at BSU, and he asked me, and I'm sure I still have the email, if we could increase the fines on marijuana because a lot of college students were using them. And in those days, there was no medical marijuana, there was no retail marijuana, it was all black market. And the risk factor in Bridgewater from the black market right now is that the cost of street pot, and I call it street pot because it's very different than legal, is about half the cost. So kids don't hang out and talk to their 21-year-old friends and say, hey, can you give me a dollar fifty edible? They are getting their sources from many other areas as well. And so the risk factors will not change based on this vote. There's also confusion over the structure of the question. The structure of the question is aligned with the state exception that's in place at the state level. And the state talks about local control. Both of the medical treatment centers were engaged in business prior to July 1st of 2017, and that's key in our question. Because the question does target the two medical marijuana dispensaries and gives them the opportunity to request a license for retail. It does not, does not drop the ban in Bridgewater. It does not change the ability for them to relocate, it does not afford the ability for Cumberland Farms to say, hey, I'm going to open up, you know, a shop also. It does not change the ban in Bridgewater. What it does is create an exception as the state allows for medical dispensaries engaged in business prior to July 1st of 2017, which is why the message, why the question is constructed that way. The exception already exists. No one has challenged it in court. It most likely could be challenged in court, but the voters of Bridgewater have proven time and time again that they are smart, educated, well-educated people when it comes to questions, whether we're going to build a firehouse or an elementary school, or allow something that the state already has an exception to. And so you can dismiss the $500,000, but I hope, and we're not going to talk about it tonight, but I hope at some point the council puts together a cash policy that says what to do with that, the taxes. It doesn't have to go into the general fund. It could be set up into funding to repair the Oak Street Bridge, or it could be set up as funding to do a dog park, or it could be used as funding for something else. That's going to be a determination of the council policy if the council decides to create a cash policy for these taxes. So the risk factors already exist. The exception at the state level was already there. And as we know, there are a proliferation of retail shops right around us that have easy access right across the line in Halifax, right down the road in Middleborough. If you go to Brockton Hospital, you pass one. If you go up to Liberty Street for a doctor's appointment and signature, you pass one. It's easy access now. We're just giving away tax dollars by not having one in Bridgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. For myself, I certainly want to echo the comments made by most everyone with respect to the Christmas on the Common and the holiday parade. I think that it was a tremendous collaboration among the parties involved in corralling the volunteers and the materials, and obviously devoting the time necessary to put in place the decorations and the lights. I think that it actually just demonstrates the degree to which collaboration among private parties in Bridgewater can accomplish great results. And I think, again, the event was tremendously well-attended. I certainly enjoyed seeing it. It was a little difficult to work through the crowd, in fact. It was, you know, so well-attended. I didn't take advantage of getting a pony ride, maybe next time, but it was really a very unique, and I thought very festive atmosphere. And again, it was a tremendous day weather-wise, which was a big improvement over the day immediately prior. But, so that's my only comment. I also do want to thank the citizens who offered comments to the council this evening. And there's absolutely no question, I think I can speak for everyone without a doubt here, there's no question as to the sincerity of the statements that you make and that you have made here for time and time again over the course of months. We do take those comments to heart. We understand your position, and we certainly respect your opinion. The matter, of course, right now is in the hands of the voters, and, you know, barring a blizzard, then on January 7th, we'll see what the outcome is. But nonetheless, we thank you for the input and the research and the time you've devoted to appear before us to offer your comments. So with that, I would simply entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none.